...treatment on the kids in town. And his suggestion to us was rather than have the parents call you guys who complain, have them call and talk to the dispatch sergeant. And because they normally are well aware of the names of the kids that are involved in some of these things that are going on in town. And they'll be able to address the problem a lot better than going through one of us. But I had no problem with a phone call if a parent of a kid is stressed about something or some treatment that they perceive happy to listen to that. And we get to talk to their department. Anything else?
I did attend one other meeting with community. And to get the joint starters and then go on more of that though during the 20's part of that.
I attended the Red County Mayor Association of Cokeyville. Very interesting meeting with all the mayors around Red County. Let's see what's going on. A lot of interesting people to talk to. Then I attended the Minnesota Stir Chart 55 Year Celebration. That represents city Montrose. And that was a great turnout for those people. Really interesting. And National Lado Halle Teer Dinner went good. Everybody was happy to attend it. That's about it for Red County. Kitchen.
If I just recap just here, it's pretty brief. Do you want to just repeat that?
A meeting was held on September 30th with members of the Community Center Kitchen Committee and representatives of local organizations. Plans and forms and schemes were submitted to the state for the review in kitchen in September. The committee is waiting for a response from the state at this time. Local organization can apply for a special permit through the state of Minnesota. Department of Health allows for the use of the kitchen permit allows the organization to hold three events within a 12-month period. Translation by Custom Fire about the purchase of a truck.
Good evening, Mayor. Before I introduce Wade, I just want to say my hats off to our truck company. They've been working hard diligently on this truck. Watching I see tonight from Wade is the apparatus that was designed to, with your guys' approval tonight, protect our city in surrounding areas that we serve for the next 20 to 30 years. So as Wade's presenting, Wade presents, I want that to stay in your mind. You know, when we design a truck, it's not tomorrow. It's 20, 30 years from now, what our city's going to be like. So a couple of years ago, in our long-term planning, Barb asked me what our next expenditure was going to be, and I told her it would be an engine. She asked me how much, and I had no clue. And she asked a number, I shot from the hip, I said $400,000. We are over that number. I had a goal, and a little bit over that goal, but I believe with my eyes, it's within reason. Funding-wise, we are sitting quite well with the funding. We have no issues paying for the truck outright. However, if we did that, we only got money in reserve, but I'd like to see us have a little bit more. So the goal is just to pay cash for half of it and then finance the other through the bank in town here. I believe we're looking at around four and a half-ish percent that the bank would give us for interest. The money that we would save by financing, we could pay cash for the equipment that we would purchase for this truck to put it in service once we receive it. So once again, our committee has done a heck of a job of looking into the future and hopefully what this city's going to do with putting this truck together. So without further ado, I would like to introduce Wade Corvita, Custom Fire.
in the state. And let's see here, slide show. Hello, I'm Wade Corvita. As Jason said, and I have a presentation over here, so I'll just step back to this We're located in Osceola, Wisconsin, which is just on the border across from, if you're area here and talk through the presentation and let me know if I can speak up. familiar with the location of Scandia or Forest Lake, Minnesota, basically straight Just gotta open up my PowerPoint here. Is there power? across the Twin Cities from here. And we've been in business since 1978, and we are a company of about 40 people, all highly
Okay. If I just step away.
Okay. skilled craft people in the manufacturing plant. Custom Fire is a manufacturer of fire apparatus. We do have some specialties that are reflected in the design of this truck. Stainless steel being one of those. We work a lot with stainless steel, and that's partly a function of the climate that we're in in the south and kind of the corrosive environments that we find ourselves in and expecting 20 or 30 years out of an apparatus that you really wouldn't see if you built it with alternate forms of materials. When you buy a truck from Custom Fire, you know, we do act kind of like an architect for the apparatus, layout the designs, build in certain factors with regards to NFPA codes, as well as just some ergonomic features of the truck, and those will be reflected as I move forward here. When we build an apparatus, we computer design the entire truck, and that's proven beneficial to our customers over the life of the apparatus. If they encounter accidents or, you know, bang up the truck or need parts replacement, we have excellent documentation on the apparatus that we build. We build about 30 to 40 trucks a year. And realistically, in truth, the type of apparatus that your fire department has spec out is, I would have to think, is as a result of traveling around the area and seeing other departments in the county and maybe further out. It's a fairly common style of apparatus what people are buying and putting in their fire departments nowadays. We do use advanced computerated CNC machining such as laser sheet metal cutters and CNC press brakes in our manufacturing construction. This presentation, in all honesty, I wasn't sure how to tailor it quite if it's too deep. Just kind of forgive me that aspect. I'm an engineer by schooling, so I tend to focus a little bit too much on how we build trucks and what we do in the manufacturing environment. There's some traits of our production, kind of the raw body, and then as it goes together, and these are things that have maybe more meaning to the firefighter and the end user of the apparatus. And just demonstrating the componentry and the types of materials that we use. It's heavy gauge stainless steel, 3/16th wall tube on the subframe and 12-gauge stainless material on the apparatus and pump structure. We do a lot of things that are created in the design of our trucks to help the firefighter be efficient on the scene and frankly, safe as well. Whether it's a low hose bed or easy to access hose compartments or tools, the storage of equipment has become very, there's been a lot more attention placed on the storage of equipment in the last 10 years in terms of when you're going and grabbing commonly used accessories such as adapters and fittings and hand tools, to place them in a neat and orderly fashion, what you might call ergonomic design and layout. It results in a more efficient operation on scene. It also results in better care and usage of the equipment if you can imagine not throwing your tools in a bin or in a drawer you're organizing it and keeping it well maintained. This is just some more examples of trucks. These trucks, incidentally, are, this one's at the Minneapolis Airport, this is in Cambridge, Minnesota, this is the front end of a truck in Monticello, Minnesota. We also focus on the things that you don't necessarily see or frankly, that you don't really want to see while you're on the truck, and that would be the electrical system. You can imagine the numerous amounts of lights on these trucks and audible warning devices like siren speakers, mechanical sirens. They also have electrically driven foam systems. They have a line voltage system, which is in this case, a 10,000-watt hydraulic generator, which is running various forms of lights and cord reels, all in the name of providing a safe and functional operation on scene. It's not very often that fire calls take place on an afternoon like we had yesterday. They're usually on an evening like we're going to have tonight or maybe early tomorrow morning or in the winter when you need excellent lighting and just function while you're on scene. The chassis of this truck is called, it's a custom style chassis, but frankly, it's a large cab-over chassis manufactured specifically for the fire service by Spartan Chassis. A new innovation that they have on these trucks is a full airbag system. And believe it or not, the fire service is not led the pace of the automotive industry. They've actually trailed, but there's some reasoning behind that as well. It's basically a much smaller volume industry. There's about 3,500 fire apparatus built a year in the country, and with those small numbers of volume, or the smaller the volume, it would be understandable that you're not going to have every automotive type of innovation in the series. I have a link here. Does this, I assume this is on YouTube or Google?
Not sure if it's tagged or not.
Okay. For sure. This is just a link to a video that demonstrates some of the technology. NFPA stands for the National Fire Protection Agency, and they've kind of written a rulebook for the fire service going back as far as I can remember, and they come out with standards about every three to six years. We're still operating off the 2009 edition, the industry is, I should say. Before that, they had one in 2006, 2003, 1999, 1996, and I believe 1991. And the last issue in 2009 probably had the most dramatic requirements regarding personnel safety. They do not require an airbag system, but they do require many design attributes in the trucks. For example, items within the cab must resist a 9G load. That's for, basically for projectiles in the cab. The number one killer of firefighters is rollovers. So we can provide electronic stability control or do tilt table testing or do a vertical center gravity measurement on the design of the truck. This apparatus would have electronic stability control. We also have a tilt table at our plant, which we subject apparatus to. When you receive a truck from Custom Fire, you get obviously a full complete delivery package with as-built electrical, as-built body, pump and plumbing diagrams, OEM parts list, exploded body view drawings from our 3D CAD system. And then we partner with all of our component suppliers to have superior parts availability and relative to onsite service, testing and repair. We lead the industry in our warranties on paint, electrical, apparatus, body construction, plumbing. And as you can imagine, there's just a whole host of different systems on these trucks that frankly, need all, you know, kind of need a whole layout of different warranties and coverage, whereas, you know, 10-year on the paint, 15 on aluminum body, we're talking 12-gauge stainless steel here, so it's going to carry a 20-year warranty, a lifetime on the subframe. And you know, if you're not familiar with fire apparatus or the ownership or maintenance thereof, warranties are important, service is important, parts availability is important, and reliability of the manufacturer is of utmost importance. I listed some of our references just in kind of the area, and I can read them off if it's not legible, but Maple Plain, Buffalo, Rockford, Wayzata, St. Michael, Monticello, Annandale, Maple Lake, Watertown, Hanover, Cologne, Waconia, Chaska, Plymouth, Dassel, Litchfield, Waverly, Hamel, and Rogers. So those names might sound like a mutual aid call to the fire department if they encounter a lot of those names. Certainly, if you leave town, you probably have to go through one of those towns. And most of the names on there represent multiple apparatus. And I just bring that up as a point that we're definitely in the community. We've been around for a long time. We're going to stick around, and you know, I can provide superior references. Incidentally, I always find it's important to point out, you know, how the specific type apparatus that your fire department is considering compares to what other towns are using. So, you know, a resident of Montrose, how is what your fire department running compared to, for example, what Hanover or, you know, Waverly or Monticello or Watertown, for example? So on this list, I would say that Rockford, Monticello, Watertown, Hanover, Cologne, Chaska, Dassel, Litchfield, Rogers, those towns have what I would consider, you know, they passed a 50-foot test with your truck. Other than the color, they're going to look the same from 50 feet. I mean, that's how similar. So you're buying it, and you're considering an apparatus that is very much on par with what the firefighting community is running now. And there's some photos. We all like pictures better than lists of words. So this indicates, this is Watertown, Rush City over upper right, down below is Dassel, and then over here is Mora. And I believe I put together maybe a council packet that would have some of those trucks as well in there. This is the inside pump operator environment. This is a truck, this is a photo of Monticello's truck where the pump operator stands inside the cab. It's called an enclosed hot mount. We're notable for this type of truck in our region, you know, because of the weather that we have. And it's equally nice in the summer when it's 95 degrees and 95% humidity as it is in the dead of winter. And this style of truck is, it's a nice environment for the pump operator for sure, but it's also a nice area for rehab, for rotating firefighters in and out on kind of a poor weather day. It makes good use of overall space. It actually helps shorten the truck up and you can put the pump operator inside the cab. And it's, again, it's a, it is a safe environment, and it is nice that the pump operator is only contending with the operation of the truck and the water supply rather than the weather elements. You can hear the radio very nicely, and you can hear the communications from the firefighters very well. This is a shot of the seating that this truck would have. Four rear-facing seats. There are also two on the other side, driver and officer, front seats. And some of the Montrose design features, they incorporated extra-tall rescue body sides. Understanding that this is not a five, seven, or 10-year investment, this is 20, 30-year investment, they're making full use of the available real estate, so to speak, to carry equipment and grow into it over the life of the apparatus. Enclosed hot mount controls, which I mentioned. Enclosed seating for six firefighters. 1,500 gallon per minute pump for ample water output. That is very much on par with what fire departments are buying. I would argue that it's mostly for ISO ratings, maintain a nice insurance rating rather than maybe what you're going to use most frequently on the average call. But that's pretty much the standard pump. 1,000 gallon poly tank, they're not made out of steel anymore, they're made out of half-inch and three-quarter and 12 polypropylene for corrosion resistance. We talked about the stainless steel construction. It's all LED lighting. If it's a light, it's LED on this truck. Hydraulic 10,000-watt generator for a quiet, reliable electrical supply that would be driven off a transmission, hot shift PTO. We have a 6,000-watt telescoping light tower, again, to illuminate the lighting. Incidentally, if I see a customer in, you know, two or three years after they have their truck, and I usually see them before then, it functions, but you know, if you're talking to them, hey, how you like the truck, so on and so forth, they usually brag about how the light tower has really improved their game, how much more secure and safe they feel on scene, parked on the side of the highway, they got the light up, they can see at 2:00 AM very well around the truck. So that's, that's an investment that pays dividends in terms of peace of mind on the scene, which oftentimes can make the difference between, you know, success and failure on a call. Electronic discharge valves for performance and durability. That results in a more compact control panel and frankly, more space inside the cab to, for work surface and whatnot. Class A foam system, again, that's, those are pretty ubiquitous in firefighting nowadays. Rear intake and large diameter discharges. Some of these are in common with what they're already running on their older truck in terms of the operations, being able to draft from the back of the truck so you don't have to set a water tank up or folding tank up in the lane of traffic. And being able to discharge water in a large volume off the rear. Low hose bed for safe and ergonomic reach to hose lays. And then a whole variety of tool boards, trays and shelves for tool mounting and storage of equipment. This is the drawing of the truck that we worked with, or that we developed, I should say, with your fire department. And I'm not even going to pretend that anybody can read what these say, but I'll just remark. We have a variety of LED scene lighting. This is a taller-than-normal rescue body. Storage for backboards, a Stokes basket, the interior work area for the pump operator. The light tower will be nestled into the body. We have sliding storage for ladders and suction hose, multiple rear discharge points and rear intake. And then I just have some human factor images drawn in at 5' 7" inches, just kind of average size person to be able to reach equipment. And then we just kind of had some fun with the coloring of the truck and what it could potentially look like with the paint applied. There is no striking or lettering shown at this point. And with that, I just thank you for your attention. Would welcome any questions.
I would like to thank Wade for coming out. I guess we did trip out on the news. Most of them are reading things, so I think first time. I guess the big question is Wade, if we can do that.
Price and all the way home.
One thing, with this dollar amount, forgive me, I don't remember what month it was, towards the beginning of the year, it also proved us to go through the HGAC buy program. That's why we're not going off the bid like normal by using that consortium purchase we could pick it under. That's why we have Wade here tonight. The price that Wade's going to give you has our buy-in to that. I think it was $2,000 for our buy-in to that, and we're going to save around $10,000 to $12,000.
Yes. The dollar amount savings depends on the total package price because we discount features. The HGAC is a recent area consortium, basically, and it's, it's a government buying instrument. It's kind of like GSA that you may be familiar with, where we bid products to HGAC and then they maintain those records on file. Because their customers are municipalities and nonprofits, their customers are typically in a bidding or RFP environment. What they've found beneficial for their customers is that they can frankly, you know, spec out a truck, price out a truck, and there's a lot of transparency in the costs associated. We are incented to discount the products because there's less time investment. I'm with the factory, I'm a mechanic engineer with the factory. I've been with it since 1997. I've been working in a sales capacity for about 11 years. And, you know, we can wrap up a lot of time in the bidding and proposals and things like that and rack up a lot of expenses. We can zero in on opportunities to sell and manufacture apparatus. It gives us an incentive to frankly, you know, trim the costs and cut out some of the expense that would be normally associated with just the multiple proposals. You know, we were meeting last week, kind of just as a sales group, and it was commented that, you know, it's not uncommon to put out 80 proposals for every 12 trucks. So that's just a huge amount of overhead that we wish to eliminate and basically be factory-direct when we can. We can't always do that. I have dealers off Maryland and Virginia. It's not reasonable to think that we can factory-direct out there. But here in our home turf, we can be, and we can be competitive that way. That said, you know, whatever Wade's here is the price, and the cost of this truck is And that is frankly, on par with other apparatus of this nature. We've done HGAC with several, I guess on that list that I had up there, St. Michael would be the most recent example, made its delivery last week. Jordan would be another one. And Wayzata would be one. Sandstone, Virginia.
It's, it, it gives us an incentive to frankly, you know, trim the costs and cut out some of the expense that would be normally associated with just the multiple proposals. You know, we were meeting last week, kind of just as a sales group, and it was commented that, you know, it's not uncommon to put out 80 proposals for every 12 trucks, so that's just a huge amount of overhead that we wish to eliminate and basically be factory-direct when we can. We can always do that. I have dealers off Maryland and Virginia, and it's not reasonable to think that we can factory-direct out there. But here, in our home turf, we can be, and we can be competitive that way. That said, you know, whatever Wade's here is the price. And the cost of this truck is $519,867. And that is frankly, on par with other apparatus of this nature. We've done HGAC with several, I guess on that list that I had up there, St. Michael would be the most recent example, made his delivery last week. Jordan would be another one. And Wayzata would be one. Sandstone, Virginia. You know, I guess I have more than I'd think, I probably have a dozen or so departments that have gone with the HGAC approach. It makes sense when you have a manufacturer in your backyard versus, you know, there's some states, there are, you know, it's more often that you don't have a factory-direct supplier in fire apparatus than you do, but in your case, HGAC is good for that.
So what we're asking for tonight is your approval to go under contract with Custom Fire to make a purchase of this engine to proceed with the build.
When do you think you would have this?
My last refund was eight months after.
Yeah, I would say eight, seven to eight months, because there's some time for buildup. So it's certainly be, I would expect completion to be around that May time range of 2014. The payment structures that we would require would be payment for the chassis upon completion. That's going to be in the neighborhood of $210,000, and that would be likely to go around March. So there would not be a down payment with contract, there's not, you know, if you want to make something like that, I can provide financial incentives to do that, that's called prepaying and discount. That's not real common, because not everybody's in that kind of, not frankly, not many people are in your situation from what you've relayed tonight. But we did, we actually did, we're building a truck like very similar to this for Wisconsin Dells in the near future, and they did a full prepay on that truck. So we're, we're with the work, however, you know, we work with municipal leasing companies to be at a competitive rate, but what the chief has laid out for you guys tonight with your bank, you know, we frankly recommend you go through your local bank when you can. In some ways, they're being very competitive. If you're at four and a half, that's competitive with municipal lending agencies. So I guess to, you know, a real quick snapshot would be, it's, it's not, it's like 208 and change, but you know, just call it 210 would be in like March, and then in May would be the remaining three. Three and nine, three, three, seven.
Ready to move to, if ready to contract with Custom Fire?
I will second that motion.
Motion by Mark Roger, second by Michelle Otto, and here is contract. Ben, I vote aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Mark Roger.
Aye.
Michelle Otto.
Aye.
Lloyd Johnson.
Aye.
Motion passed, viable. Thank you. Thank you.
Next on the list, we have the resignation of Jeff Bristol.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Jeff Bristol.
I'll second.
Motion by Henry, second by Johnson. I vote aye. Mark Roger.
Aye.
Michelle Otto.
Aye.
Lloyd Johnson.
Aye.
Ben.
Aye.
Motion carried by.
I'm actually working on. Also, I'm actually getting into the department and the certification.
Well, I need to have to do that. We received one application for fire chief, it was from Jason Chaffins. And I would recommend this point for 2014, I think. She, she has got an excellent job.
We have been in motion to accept Jason Chaffins as 2014 fire chief.
I'll second that. Motion by Mark Roger, second by Lloyd Johnson, to accept Jason Chaffins as fire chief. Mark Roger, I vote aye. Michelle Otto.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ben.
Aye.
Ben, aye. Motion passed, viable. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Park and Recreation update, let me answer.
Well, a couple of things I need. One is, I have a new member that's interested in Park and Rec, it's named Jesse Lesnow. And I recommend that the council appoint Jesse to the Park and Recreation Commission.
I'd like to motion to appoint Jesse to the department.
Motion by Michelle Otto, second by Mark Rogers. Michelle Otto, I vote aye. Lloyd Johnson.
Aye.
Ben.
Aye.
I vote aye. Mark Roger.
Aye.
Motion carried, viable.
The second is Ashlyn Otto, attended our Recreation Commission meeting a couple weeks ago on the first of October, and she's interested in being a junior member, and the commissioner recommended that the council point her as junior member.
I made that motion to appoint Ashlyn Otto as a junior member.
I'll second that. Motion by Ben, second by Park, to appoint Ashley Otto, Park and Rec. Johnson, I vote aye. Ben.
Aye.
I vote aye. Mark Roger.
Aye.
Michelle Otto. Mark Roger. Pass, all the way.
Okay, a couple of things, we discussed the Pezzan Hills Park, the playground in the park, and actually, the guys started building it today. It's just about up, I believe. Couple things to finish out. But the equipment is just about in, and then they just need to put in the fabric and all the rock and the wood chips. The dog stations, dogway stations arrived, and I think they're in also. One thing we did talk about, actual council member, Craxer, we talked about it, was to buy, rather than buying more of the dogway stations, was to buy just the bag holders and mount them on our garbage cans, our signposts, or wherever we need, where we feel that we need work. If these seem to be working, I looked them up and we can buy them for $79. We checked into having just some made, and they would be a little closer to $100 actually to make them, so the $79, $79 is a much better deal, because it already has all the instructions and signage on them, so that may be something we might be looking into. If these seem to be working, we'll probably look into getting just the bag holder. The only couple of things we talked about was the Meister Park Plan, and both we met those, which I think Justin's going to talk about, aren't you? Or not? No? Oh. We met, we met on the 23rd of September.
I can talk, if you want to hear me talk.
We met on the 23rd of September, and reviewed the, the park plan for the second time. Out of the ones that were chosen, the first time, the three plans that were chosen, the people that were in attendance, by kind of by general consensus, agreed to one of the plans. So I think they're, we're working on now, drawing up the plans based around the one that we chose that night, which will come back now in the future.
November will be.
The November will be. I don't even have it on, I don't remember that. The other thing we discussed was open gym at the Monticello Elementary School, and I know that's on the agenda for later on, but there is, we will be having open gym at the school starting this Wednesday. So I'll just leave it at that, and we can talk about it when it comes up on that agenda. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
General committee update. Michelle Otto, Mark Rogers. I brought my, my notes from our September 17 meeting, and I guess we're going to call it the personal committee meeting with the staff. And what we talked about at our personal meeting was, basically, we set up a calendar for our meetings, and they're going to be the off weeks from our, from our council meetings. So the personal committee meets at 8:30 in the morning in the conference room. We talked about communications, how, how to make sure that we can all look at one another, and email seems to be the, email attacks is the major for media. We have some concerns about the council meeting audio, we're having a hard time, Barb is even having a hard time hearing our voices on the table during the meeting minutes, and so we talked about some possible upgrades to that. We just had a discussion a long time ago, I think that's where we, we already did an update on that. The curfew changed, we talked about that. There's private wells that are coming up on the, they're on the agenda. The dogways, I went to Delmo to kind of go to school on the Delmo, and we have their dogway stations to see what we put on them. And so was able to get together with Jason from public works, and we were around and tried to make sure we got most, with the five that we had, most of the city put a dogway station, where we probably more to come to see how these work out. That's what.
Hi, that's cool. What the committee set up, so we're going to check in the Rockford City Hall, have you had a chance to do that?
Rockford, Tom Chappell, Abby Rockford. She's not there every day, they all work hard tonight.
And we also talked about the management stuff. And.
We also talked about the need to cover our salt pipe. You know, the oil officials, we talked for, because we waste a lot of annuals uncovering the tarps with snow, replacing the tarps as we give it.
We also talked about the project move that Mark and I are working on, and having it be their own entity in that, for city council, city staff stuff, more separate from within the cities.
Okay, then we'll move on to old business personnel policy review.
Mayor and council, this is a quick update on the personnel policy. As you know, the policy was approved by the council on August 12th. At that time, there was a brief discussion that we had in the meeting about whether the fire department was covered on this policy. And after that, I met with fire chief and a couple of members of the department and the city administrator to discuss how the personnel policy would apply to the fire department or if it should. And basically, what you have in your packet is a proposed amendment to the policy to remove the fire department from the scope of the personnel policy. And, and the reason for that, and I'll ask Jason to come up if he wants to add anything, but I can kind of summarize what our discussion was and why we reached that conclusion. Firefighters are not regular city employees, they're in their own separate department. They aren't treated like other city employees, they don't get benefits, they don't have insurance coverage, they're not, you know, they don't fall within that same category of regular city employees. The department is, is unique and it's fairly independent from the rest of the city staff. The department also has its own policies and procedures that's put together and have been in place for some time. Now, there are some overlapping areas in the fire department's policies and the city personnel policy, but after some discussion with fire chief, we felt that those areas were really unique to the kind of issues that come up in the fire department, and where general policies didn't really apply as well. And so we concluded that it was probably most beneficial to have the fire department maintain its own policies and procedures. And I'm also going to be working with them on doing some minor updating and minor revision, just to get those into better shape. But for the most part, they're, they look good, and they put a lot of work into getting those in place. So that's really kind of just a summary of the discussion we had, and Jason wants to add something, he sure can.
Mary, just playing about some things, and I just don't ask me to remember what they were, some things that need to be highlighted that we didn't have covered, so we just need to tweak them around a little bit to cover some other aspects that we haven't covered. So.
So you guys are okay about keeping it separate?
Yes. I mean, if you go through the, the city's policies.
That's been a reasonable question.
Yeah, I mean, we're not a, you know, we're a whole, we're part of the city, but we're separate when it comes to employee status. I mean, we're, yeah, we're employees, but not, we're unique. We are.
You are, all of you.
Very. People on board, and also we brought in.
Right, that pretty much wraps that, we have pretty much ended up. So what we're looking for tonight, unless the council has some concerns about that or questions, which we're happy to answer, we just are looking for approval of the amendment that's noted on page two. And you'll see that I, I struck the language regarding volunteer firefighters and enlisted them under the, based, under the exception to the policy, along with other people who are not covered by the policy. So we're just looking for a motion to approve the amendment, unless there's, unless the council has.
I'll make a motion to adopt personnel policy as we move into Montrose Fire Department from the Montrose Personnel Policy. I'll second that. Motion by Henry, second by Johnson. Ben, I vote aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Mark Rogers.
Aye.
Michelle Otto.
Aye.
Lloyd Johnson.
Aye.
Motion carried, viable. Thank you. Now, according to private wells, ordinance amendment, chapter 32, section 10.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, the ordinance, proposed ordinance in your packet tonight is related to a discussion I believe we had in December regarding the private wells and allowing an exception for use of existing private wells in the urban reserve zoning district for agricultural purposes. Barb and I worked on this, drafted this ordinance together, so we could certainly answer any questions about it, but this was just in response to the discussion about this issue Private wells are prohibited except as described in the ordinance. City council may allow the use of an existing peck of well if the following conditions exist: wells located on property within the urban reserve zoning district and well is being utilized for agricultural purposes. We'll make a motion to adopt the personnel, sorry, to adopt the ordinance amendment to private wells.
I'll second it with the discussion. Motion by Michelle Otto, second by Mark Rogers. We'll record discussion.
Does that, does that meet your?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Let me get a little.
That's all I need to hear.
Okay, I vote aye, Mark Rogers.
Aye.
Michelle Otto.
Aye.
Lloyd Johnson.
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Motion carried by. Then we'll move on to new business manufacturing agreement proclamation action. We have a motion to obtain on October twentieth to October twenty-six, twenty thirteen, Minnesota Manufacturing Committee, Montrose Department.
So in your packet, this is proclamation, would you like to read that? Page fifty-seven.
Fair proclamation, City of Montrose, whereas the manufacturing industry is the dynamic part of Minnesota and the city of Montrose economy and promotion of the sector's strength success and high quality of life as the integral part of Montrose economic development strategy in, whereas manufacturing provides high skill, high, uh, sensitivity, contribute to Minnesota's high standard of living and economic fidelity and whereas manufacturing, as the second largest total table among businesses and sectors in Minnesota, providing sixteen point four billion in wages, and whereas Montrose Manufacturing provides high quality jobs for area residents, and whereas manufacturing in Minnesota produces thirty-seven point zero billion for the state economy and the largest share of fifteen percent of our gross domestic product. Therefore, Roy Henry, Mayor of Montrose, does hereby proclaim that the week of October twentieth, twenty thirteen to October twenty-six, twenty thirteen, shall be observed as Minnesota's manufacturing, City of Montrose, on the fourteenth day of October two thousand and thirteen.
Do you mean a motion to accept that? Make a motion to accept that proclamation?
I'll second that motion. Motion by Mark Rogers, second by Ben. Mark Rogers, how do you vote?
Aye.
Michelle Otto.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carried by. Montrose Elementary School Open Gym.
Will you take that? Okay, um, as discussed at the last council meeting, uh, we had a discussion as to finding something for the kids to do here in town. So as a starter, um, I reached out to Tony Stappus, the elementary school principal, and set up a meeting, which was, uh, myself, Ben and Barb, to get open gym started. Um, and then with me and Tony, we met with Community Education to start open gym, which will be starting this Wednesday, uh, sixteen, in O one, from six to eight, and O one, every Wednesday and Sunday, six to eight AM, um, children twelve and under, have an adult with them. Uh, so, and we need to hire, have two supervisors at the, to cover and take care of, you know, all the things that the school needs. So they, I gone ahead and hired, um, one to work on Wednesdays and that, I don't recall her name, but she works with childcare, um, and the other one works, uh, the preschool. So, um, what we need then is a motion to make a donation to community, I put a seven hundred thirty-five dollars for the open gym to cover, so, yep, to gym.
I'll make that motion to contribute seven hundred, or donate seven hundred thirty-five dollars to the community education, um, for the, uh, cover costs for the, uh, open gym.
I'll second. Motion by Ben, second by Lloyd Johnson. Michelle Otto, how do you vote?
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote aye, Mark Rogers.
Aye.
Motion carried by. Okay, then we'll move on to computer systems, security, Michelle Otto.
Um, that's just a discussion that, um, I've had with Barb a couple times. I have problems with our computer systems, the city hall computer systems, sending emails, um, retrieving emails, anything like that, and, um, and we had addressed at previous times, um, different security that Barb and I went into, different, um, meetings that they have been to, and at one point, we're looking into changing the security up at City Hall, so I thought it would be best that we, we need checking our computer systems to make sure everything is good, viruses, that kind of stuff, everything's working.
We kind of use, um, Paulman Computer Services, Gordy Paulman, and Bruce Peterson from Montrose is his employee, and Bruce maintains our, our computers first, he comes in once a month, or as he do, and a couple years ago, we did have someone try to hack our server, and that was remedy, we upgraded all of our security at that time. Um, I, I think that on, ongoing efforts have been made to keep that at a high level. I know that Bruce can access our computer from his home and he can check to see if we had any, um, attempts to hack, and as far as I know, we have not. I think that they do a good job for us, they also work for the city of Buffalo and the city of Lake, and I believe they also work for another city in Hopkien, I can't remember names, but they do a lot of local computer work and I, and I do think that they're doing a good job for our city.
And they're only once a month, right?
We have them come in once a month, the first Friday of every month, and they go through and they update and clean up viruses and, and call as needed, you know, we have problems, they're available right away if our, we, like, we had, um, internet crash a couple different times and they're available immediately. Frankly, since we switched to, um, our current carrier, which is, is, um, Comcast, we haven't had problems like we did before, so that hasn't been a much issue. And as far as I know, our system's running really well. I know that you have trouble with your accessing your email, and I don't really know, um, I let Bruce know that, but I, you know, I'm not sure how the remnants of that work.
And even, um, retrieving emails, and like, if we try to send an email, it just gets, like, lost and then on.
Well, you're in the system, so maybe you need to, um.
I, I've contacted Bruce.
You've talked to him?
Yes, he's too busy. At the time, I mean, I haven't reached out to him since, so, I mean, he was busy when I reached out to him, so, um, you know, obviously I can check again, could like.
Well, I'm busy, then, I'll call, I'll get ahold of him, so, and let him know that we need some serious attention paid to that, because they're going to have an email.
Mark is not accessible, does anybody else have any problems?
I can't, I can't reply consistently.
Maybe he's got it set up too secure. I know we wrote a couple different, um, security things on there, so he might have it set too secure, he might not know my, I guess.
There's no, there's no ability for me to track it, does he have to consent?
Okay.
Maybe it's me.
And I know, like, when someone write emails, um, there's no filling. So if I can't, like, retrieve, you know, like, if I run it back, I'm like, I have to go and retrieve an email or something, it just disappears. It's on, yep.
Do you delete them right away? When you're ready, you just.
No, I don't, if I write emails, it's not.
Okay, 'cause I've got, you know, all mine sitting in my inbox, and I contacted Bruce and he walked me through it, um, checked, and I'm excited some issues right away too, but I haven't had a problem. Um, I know he thought that some of my issues may have been the software or, um, antivirus that's on my computer that I was checking with. No, we haven't had.
So would you like me to do that? Contact him or would you like to?
Well, I, I have his email, so I'll try again. But I, I also think that we need, you know, I've been trying to get my email set up in my phone for, like, some time and it was only available for, like, an hour on Friday. So, it needs to be more accessible.
I'm sure if we're willing to be able to do that, he is, you know, that's when he's at City Hall.
Right.
So, we could probably make arrangements for him to meet you at a different time.
Need a motion, but, um.
I don't think so, we, we could just.
Okay.
Contact him, or Michelle can have me to set up something we need at City Hall next Monday morning, or whatever.
Yeah, I'll just try to, you know, and.
Or I can too.
See what he says.
We can talk.
Okay, then we'll move on to Water Rogers, discussing about maintaining the city water waters, allow public works department to enter properties that have city water to maintain or examine the water meter without a warrant.
I pass this out before, this is from Mary, and I, I don't think it's as cut and dry as we thought perhaps it was. Sean, did you get that?
I did not.
Could you have? Here's another one.
There were a couple copies on the table that was. So I think, uh, this is gonna take some conversation and.
Yeah, and, um, Barb and Mayor and Council, I'm happy to, you know, talk about this now or at a different time, but I, I don't know who originally had proposed this or had a question about it, it was.
I think Sean did.
Well, we talked about it at Personnel, you know, right, last week, two weeks ago, right?
And apparently, and Sean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but there had been something in the city code previously allowing public work staff to enter property to do inspections.
That is correct.
Okay, and I don't know what the, the prior ordinance said specifically, I didn't look up the old ordinance, I guess, but generally, in order to have access to private property, um, you need to have consent from the homeowner or property owner, and if you can't get consent, then typically entry is done by getting an administrative warrant under the property. You know, usually for inspection purposes, I mean, most people are very cooperative and I think for the most part, um, are happy to have, oh, the city staff be able to access the properties and look at water meters and do their jobs so that they can, um, get the information they need. In the, I think in the hopefully rare event that a homeowner or property owner would refuse to give consent, um, we would have to go the route of getting a warrant. Um, that's a fairly routine, you know, fairly fast process, it's just something you need to go to a judge and say, we have a legal right to have access to the property and don't have consent, so the judge typically signs off on that as long as you have a legal basis for it. Um, certainly inspections of this kind would be a legal basis to get into a property. Um, but it is, I think, problematic just by, just by putting something into your ordinance saying, we can come into your property, doesn't necessarily give you the legal authority to do that. Um, there are some exceptions to that general rule, if there's an emergency that needs to be dealt with, um, or some kind of imminent, you know, public health or safety issue, um, where you would be allowed, you, the city, be allowed to interrupt a private property without, without consent. Uh, so in those kinds of situations, you know, that's, that's a different story, that's an exception to that general rule. Um, but, you know, we can, we can certainly have more discussion about this, about the questions generally speaking, but now, I'd be happy to try to address those.
Have a very, I don't think a person should be going on anybody's property unless you really got permission, because look what happened with Inspector Dog in Minneapolis, he come under the property, he was, oh, guy had, that guy's property was, and next time he went back, over his sixteen hundred, and he had a family.
Why does that be a reason for getting a warrant?
I actually looked a little further in, which is a few things, I know we got some things that ain't right, that I know we're gonna correct and, uh, with some people, you know, I'm telling you. And I think it'd be the safest way to get a warrant or whatever, to protect our workers in the city.
Right, and, you know, Sean, I mean, Sean can speak to this a lot better than I can, I'm just giving the legal perspective, I, I think, out in the field, I, I mean, they're most people cooperative and, um, allowing staff.
Majority of the time, yes, but there is a few that wanna upset the apple cart, so to speak, just because they can.
Right.
Um, we've had projects, an annoying project of seven hundred water meters that we've been trying to phase out and phasing the new ones, and it's month number ten, and I've still got forty properties that I need to get into and we've notified them, I can't tell you how many times, probably twenty times, and they still, still won't allow us in there, so it's probably been a little bit rough.
I'd say that's the way we're gonna do it, Sean, that's the best way, if you wanna protect our workers in the city and stuff.
I'm completely okay with that.
Yeah, but we, we never intended on going into anyone's home without right company or without, which is more public works guy anyway. That is correct. The reason that, that we might be, make sure that we can do this in a timely manner is because I'll always take, get a warrant sometimes. This last case was a couple of weeks.
Well, um, in that situation, we had some history and some very specific information that we need to compile. In the more routine cases that were, that Sean's probably talking about now, I think we'd be much faster process because we can, we can basically do the paperwork that's gonna apply in, in every, in every case, and almost, I don't know if we can do a blanket application, but certainly it would be a much faster process because we can simply identify properties by address or however we need to, give the le, give the judge a legal basis for it, saying we need to do inspections for X, Y, Z. I mean, the, the previous matter that we were dealing with, um, was different because it had some, it had some history to it, and it was, there was more information to put together on that one. So, this, this would be a much more routine.
So, so, okay, so we start people buying the dogs, thousands of gallons, hundreds of thousands of gallons of water, we had that.
No, I've learned from this and won't be doing it differently.
Okay.
What does it cost to get warrants, if anything, you know, is that costly?
I haven't seen a bill yet.
Yeah, um, just the cost for the warrant, you know, I, I, I can be back to on that, like, there might be a, a court fee involved with that. Um, as far as legal fees, the specific situation that we were dealing with, um, before, again, there was more attorney time because we had to compile information, we had to.
Have to get court costs.
We had to draft an affidavit and we had to, you know, there was more attorney time for that. There would be some attorney time, but it would, it would be a lot more minimal.
Is there any way to recoup that from the people, I mean, if you get a warrant to enter somebody's property, is there any way to recoup those legal fees?
Um, you know, probably not, I mean, I'd have to look into that, I don't know if any of those costs could be assessed, probably not. those costs could be assessed, I probably do not.
Well, I picked, well, I picked up the paperwork at the courthouse, I asked about fees, no one could give me an answer.
Okay. Well, I can get that information.
You know, our old ordinance that we used to have, it used to say in there, you know, about entering property or allowing us to enter property, and it said if you didn't allow us or get back to us within so many days, there was a fine that we could assess. Could we do it that way? Like, if they don't, you know, answer us, or if we have to get a warrant, that we can assess a, a fine to them that would cover the cost of it? When they've been, they've been notified so many times and aren't getting back to us, so we can, can we somehow?
Did you recoup some of the, some of the natters, the phone calls and the, the, the appointments that have been made and not kept?
Right, I know in the old ordinance, it used to say, um, if you didn't respond within so many days to the letter that you'd gotten, that a fine could be assessed. I don't remember what the fine was, it's been a number of years, but, I mean, it might help us recoup some of it anyway, if there is cost.
Or shut off utilities until you do reply.
That too.
Which would then be, I don't know, I mean, have to be, uh, right.
You know, I can check on, and get back to Barb in the council, you know, 'cause there, there's a number of kind of complicated legal issues involved with some of those questions. You know, what, what do you have legal authority to recover, to assess the property? As a statutory city, you have some ability to recoup some of those costs by assessment to the property, but there's some limitations on that. So, you know, we may need to take a look at what the old ordinance said, and then review what you have and see what you have a legal authority to do in the future. But there, there may be some, there may be some authority to recover some of that, but some of it might, like, end up coming out as a stop to measure.
So you need to look at this more than?
Yeah, yeah. But I'll, I can get back to pretty quickly some information on the cost and, and that kind of thing, and bring back to you.
We'll just put it on the, no number of judges. Okay. She's got it.
Yeah.
Sean, is there a thing you?
I don't see the need that person to fill that up on time.
Well, I can talk to you, but.
Most importantly, it's gonna be screwed on the process for Sean, so that he can get into these places.
Yep.
I understand.
Yes.
Do you need a motion on this end or not?
No, it's not.
All right, so one miscellaneous, great company, you can have it developed in partnership.
This Friday, the Redstone EDP will be at the senior center. And in the past, somebody from the city council has stopped by for a short period of time, you know, ten, fifteen minutes, and invite, welcomed to the city and told them about what was going on. And, um, the mayor has done that, other councilors have done that. It's kind of been one of those things, whoever's available would, would do that. I'm wondering if somebody from the city council would be interested in that. And I will, I'm gonna double check on the time because it's, might be eight, eight or eight thirty. And if you aren't available, I can come over too, so leave that up to you decide, but I wanted to extend the opportunity to the city council. Okay.
At eight thirty, you want?
Eight or eight thirty, I'll double check. I sent an email out, I didn't get a response.
All right, I'll attend. That's all right.
I'll let you go on the time.
Okay. Okay, then we've got, we've been business, DTA, Montsons, and Bank, Redstone, Agent Development Partnership, hold the direction, October twenty-third.
It's the twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Next Tuesday.
We go on to budget due three P M, November twenty-eighth.
That is our regular scheduled date for second council meeting. Sean asks if he can loop it up, he's unable to attend a later meeting that day. And in court, that Sean, we've heard of that budget discussion, so we're only at the city council, we're meeting at three P M, um, twenty-eighth, Monday, twenty-eighth.
Can we, can we use that? Yeah, that would be. What did?
On Monday.
Twenty, twenty-eight, so three o'clock. Yeah. Still, we're straight to council, you say, or something?
Our publisher, we're on the way to say, promotion.
Okay.
We'll make a motion to move the twenty-eighth meeting at three o'clock.
Second that motion. Okay, by Michelle, I'll, second by Ben, until the meeting is at three fifty-five, November twenty-eighth. Ben, I'll vote.
Aye.
I vote aye, Mark Roger.
Aye.
Michelle.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Motion carries by vote. Okay, open bond, we get time to discuss the floor. We've got acknowledgements, Dan Reamer for eleven years of service, and Graham Solms for designing the landscape plan for Highway Twelve, Olive Peters for planning along Highway Twelve, Public Works Department for planning along Highway Twelve. Montrose Manufacturers, Jeff Christo for nine years of service on Montrose five.
Um, I have, um, the fire department for their open house, um, they did a really good job, they did, uh, pouring rain, they still have pretty good turnout, and so I'd like to thank them for doing that again. Seems that, like, everybody will enjoy that. And then I have one more thing that is supposed to bring this along here, well, but I kept forgetting, this was given to the city of Montrose for, uh, you know, this is the Spark case, and they make, thank the city of Montrose for donating money, and now we can sign it. I'm just gonna.
Okay, then we go, closing now for a closing meeting.
Okay, I'll read this. You want, you have any comment? Um, so, and then you guys will need a motion after I state the reason for closing the meeting. Council's going to close the meeting pursuant to Minnesota statute thirteen D point oh five, subdivision three C three. This is relating to developing and discussing offers for a right of free rental for properties located at forty-six seventy-one, County Road Twelve, Montrose, Minnesota, forty-four oh nine, County Road Twelve, Montrose, Minnesota. So I just need a motion from the council.
Make a motion to, um, hold a closed session.
I'll second that. Motion by Ben, I vote aye, Lloyd Johnson, statute of the soul statute. I vote aye, Mark Roger. Michelle, I'll.
Aye.
Lloyd Johnson.
Aye.
Ben, aye. Motion carries by vote.
You say subdivision three C three. Thank you.